I'm showing green here.
I'd like to call the order this May 14, 2020 Board of Supervisors Workshop in Powhatan County. This evening, we are going to continue meeting remote. On my right is Mr. Mike Bailey, District Three Supervisor. Immediately to my left is Mr. Larry Norvik, District Two Supervisor. And at the end is our District Five Supervisor, Ms. Karen Carmack. And again, in the conference room, joining us remote is Mr. Bill Cox from District Four. Also, we have our interim County Administrator Brett Shardine with us. Welcome. Brett, will you share with the folks how they can participate in this meeting this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So as in our previous meetings, we're streaming on YouTube and Zoom. So people can access Zoom by their computer or smartphone. We also have several numbers published for people to dial in and listen. And if anybody wants to watch this later, the meeting will be archived on YouTube that you can get to on our website. When it comes time for public comment, if you're on the phone, you can hit star nine to be recognized and we'll bring you on the line. And if you're using the Zoom app, there's a raise hand icon. You can use that. If you have any trouble, there's a chat feature as well. You can type in comments or we'll assist you. We also accepted written comments up until this afternoon, but none were received.
Thank you, Ms. Shardine. This evening, Mr. Bailey, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Ms. Norvik, would you do the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which is standing in the name of our God, indivisible, perfect and just for all.
Lord, tonight, we ask your blessing on the members of this board and the members of the staff who are here. And those who are joining us remotely and the staff that comes in every day, whether it be physically or remotely, help us to make wise decisions, help us to see clearly. Please help us to not be so hot-headed and impulsive that we make poor decisions or too cold of feet that we don't make decisions at all. Help us to find the right way in your sight. We pray for those who are newly unemployed here in the county. We pray for the health of our citizens, both in Powhatan, in Virginia, in the United States, and around your world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Do we have any requests to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes to the order presentation? If not, I will accept a motion for the formal approval of the agenda.
Salute.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. At this time, Brett, again, do you need to give any more further instructions for a public comment for people?
No, just again, if you're on the phone and wish to be recognized, hit star nine. And if you're on the Zoom app, then just hit the raise hand icon.
Okay. At this time, I will open our first public comment period. Those wishing to come forward, if you're an individual, we'll give you three minutes. If you're representing a group, we will give you five. Please identify yourself by giving us your name and address. Brett, do we have anybody wanting to come and speak to us?
I don't see anybody. I know we've had a little bit of a lag in some of the past meetings, so I'd give it just another second. But at the moment, I'm not seeing anybody.
We'll give another few seconds. Okay, it doesn't look like we are having anybody that wants to call in this evening for this first public comment period. So I will close the first public comment period. Brett, why are we here tonight?
Yes, so we, as you know, were required to adopt a school budget by May 15th. So the school boards, you know, they met previously in March to pass a budget. Then in response to COVID-19 and some of the reduced revenues and different assistance coming in from the state and federal government, they met two nights ago to consider and adopt a revised version of that budget. So tonight, we're asking you to adopt the school budget.
Thank you, Ms. Shardine. Do we have anybody from the schools joining us tonight? I know Dr. Jones is otherwise engaged tonight. Is it graduation that he sent?
I think he's already graduated, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Not helpful, but thank you. Is anybody from school is going to be joining us, Brett, for the meeting tonight?
Yeah, I see Larry Johns. His name is on there, so he may need to unmute himself, but we should have Larry on the line.
I don't see Larry having joined us.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
There you go.
Hey.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay. I'll open the discussion on the budget. Anybody wishing to be recognized at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
I have some questions before we start about the actual budget we've been given.
I would like to make a proposal, so you go.
Yeah, I have questions before proposals, and then I might make one as well. But for now, just for clarity's sake, and probably Brett or Larry Johns, this is probably for you. The amended state budget reduction of $460,206. I think I know the answer. My question is, is that now an official number? And then I have a second question. So is that our official number from the Commonwealth of Virginia?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then secondly, is that what I'm looking at? That is on page six in the line that's got three asterisks at the bottom where it says, "State revenues have been adjusted to reflect budget amendments." And that would be in the state sources line. So does that include that $460,000? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That $23,650,639 does include the additional state revenue.
Okay, thank you. And I think that probably is going to satisfy me for now. Wait, one more, I'm sorry. Under instruction, the variance of $424,543. Can you explain the large variance so that people in the public know why that goes up by? Because, you know, proposed budget is $35 million, and the variance between 2019 and 2020 is $424,000. Can you explain basically what's in there, Larry?
Absolutely. The only increases in expenses that we have in our budget this year are the increased VRS expenses and the health insurance. And the instruction category has the majority of our employees. That's our teachers and instructional assistants and principals and everybody that works in the school. And so that's most of the money represented, is benefit-type stuff, health insurance and VRS. And that's why that category increased more from FY '20 to FY '21 than any other category.
Right, thank you. Good answer. And the reason I bring it up is if the public is looking up the budget online or looking tonight or looking at the archive, to me, I know that we have to go with the major categories that the Commonwealth says. And that's in code, but instruction is a little bit misleading. So when somebody sees the line instruction and they see $424,000 increase, they might wonder, you know, what did we buy? A ton of textbooks? Or is everybody getting a laptop or something like that? So I just want to be clear. I also want to make the point, I know everybody here knows, but the public may not know, the VRS funding is mandatory. We don't have a choice in that amount. And we had a rather large increase in health insurance benefit costs this year. So I just want to clarify that and ask the couple of questions that I did. So thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Norvik. Plus, before we make a motion, I want to get the questions out of the way.
Okay, no worries.
Any more questions for Dr. Johns or for Brett?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Johns. A question, Mr. Johns, the state portion, is that tied to the county transfer in any way? Or do you get that state portion, period, no matter what the county does?
We get that state portion with the caveat that the county has to appropriate it. But yes, that money will come to us no matter what the county does. There is a minimum funding requirement that the county has to make, but you're above that amount, so there's no issues there.
What is that minimum amount, by the way?
It is, I'd have to go and check and run the report, but it's about $14 million.
We're not remotely close to.
No, sir, not at all.
Is what Mr. Bailey's asking about, are you talking about the basic SOQ requirements from the Commonwealth? Okay.
That's all the questions right now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Cox.
Before we, are there any more questions for Mr. Johns? If so, before we get into talking about the individual proposals, I have a kind of a point of order I need Mr. Lackney's help with. But if there are other questions, does Mrs. Carmack have questions of Mr. Johns?
If I have questions, Mr. Cox.
Okay, well, why don't you all do that first?
I might have more questions after you bring your point of order, so it really doesn't matter. So if you would like to go ahead, please.
Okay. Mr. Wood, would you put up exhibit number one? While Mr. Wood is doing that, Mr. Lackney has answered a number of questions about the requirements that the state gives us. But we also have a board budgetary control policy. This lives on our county website, which I believe, when we get to the area of legal level of control, has some bearing on our discussions tonight. And so, Mr. Lackney, would you take this through us, through this, take us through this, please?
When you say take us through, you want me to go through all the sections of it?
Well, I think, anybody can have it, but I think the legal level of control area is the one that I'm most interested in and want to understand.
Okay, well, the document itself, which was approved in 2015 by the Board of Supervisors, is titled "A Budgetary Control Policy." And then in the first therefore clause, it says, "This is our budgetary control policy." This is the, I guess we'd say, the policy by which we're going to control our budget. Then if you go to legal level of control, paragraph two, it says, "The budget appropriations of the county should be controlled at the fund level, except for the Powhatan County School." So what that's saying is that the policy will be that the board will approve the budget at the fund level, general fund, capital improvement fund, et cetera, as opposed to line items. The board's going to control the budget at the highest level, which is the fund level. Well, actually, it could be a lump sum, so the next to highest level. Then paragraph three, because they separated out the schools, paragraph three addresses the budgeting of the school system. The language is not super artfully drawn. I think what it's trying to say is that the school budget will be done at the lump sum level. As you know, state code allows the county to actually budget by classi, or authorized by classification. There's eight different classifications. Instruction, I think, was already referenced. And I think this is saying or trying to say that the budget for the school will be at a global lump sum level as opposed to a classification level.
Does this inhibit in any way our ability to separate a budget approval from an appropriation approval?
I don't, well, I don't know that the intent was, again, it's the budgetary control policy, so this is.
This is budget and appropriations.
Well, I mean, it technically says this is how we're going to control the budget.
Right.
And so it has the language in there about appropriation, but it purports to be a budget control policy.
I just want to know if this, if this in any way, since it's a public document out on our website, keeps us from separating a, looking at the budget or looking at the process tonight at the budget level and also separately looking at it from the appropriation level?
No, I don't think that was the intent of this. I don't think the intent of this document is to, are you saying that, does it require budgeting and appropriation at the same time? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, there's a possibility that they could be separated. They don't have to go together.
Correct, by state law.
Okay, does this stop us from separating them?
No.
Okay, that's the point that I wanted clear, since we have this policy out here. And it can be read in a couple of ways. I just wanted to clear that it doesn't inhibit us as we go forward with the direction I think we're going in tonight. Thank you, Mr. Lackney.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I'm sure all of us share your concern that we want to do things the right way, always.
Transparent and.
If we get into a situation in the future, you know, with our policies, we might have to go back and look at them in light of the situation we find ourselves in. And I'm perfectly willing to go back and adapt if we need to do it. And we can make those changes, I'm confident. But again, thank you for bringing that to us, to our attention tonight, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Please, Mr. Norvik.
If Mr. Cox is confused, then certainly there's a large percentage of the public that would be confused. I know Mr. Cox does his homework, and those who are casually looking in, that is a little misleading. I remember the discussion about that policy. And I think Mr. Lashny is correct about the intent of the board and what you can do with it. But I do think that needs a little bit of craftsmanship. And my question is, do you think we should do it before the end of June, while we're in budget season about to take action before June 30th? Or, I mean, is this a front burner thing or is this a next year thing?
What I would suggest, with y'all's approval, is to have staff do what Mr. Norvik has suggested, clean it up so that it is clear. And then, when we get to our meeting on the 29th, we can adopt the new version. It's that easy. Should be quick. Brett, doesn't that sound doable to you?
Yeah, I'll work with Charlotte and Mr. Lashny, but I don't see any reason we can't do that.
One of the things I might suggest as part of the process is since technically all the policies that are on the website were adopted by a previous board, if we're going to cross our Ts and dot our Is, is to ratify, amend anything we're going to amend, and whatever we're not going to amend, ratify those as the continued policy of the board so that we've got a current board minute that says all of these policies are still effective.
I think that's a good suggestion. While we're in there, we might as well go ahead and do it comprehensively. Okay, I have a question. Mr. Johns?
Yes, sir.
What percent of your proposed budget is for personnel? Very different figures thrown about over the years. Should I be using the instructional category amount?
No, sir. The personnel payroll and benefit out of our adjusted 48.7 million dollar budget, 41.3 million is for personnel and benefits, and 7.4 million is for the line items. So I mean, payroll is anywhere from 82 to 85% of our budget.
So if I understand, it's around 41% of the, excuse me, 41 million of the $52 million budget is for personnel?
Well, we reduced our budget to 48, the operating budget, to 48,777,000 on Tuesday night. And so 41 million of that is for payroll and benefits.
Right, so what I'm looking at on page seven isn't the number I should be looking at in the packet. Is that correct? Because I've got, what I've got here is still showing, you know, the 50 million 205,906 for your budget. But that's changed as of the other nights, what you're telling me.
I think he's talking about total revenues on the proposed budget. The 48.7 number there.
Payroll and benefits is 41,344.
But your 50 million number is inclusive of food service.
Okay.
At the top of that page.
Yeah, so total operational is 48.
You come down.
Yeah, 48.
I don't have that in front of me, but I'll try and pull up your.
Okay, so once again, I'm trying to get at what is the personnel cost and where I should be looking?
You know, like I said, I don't have your document in front of me, but our personnel cost of our revised budget is 41,344,463 dollars.
Did you say that a little bit slower so I can get it down to Larry?
Yes, sir. 41,344,463 dollars.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
And do you have that percent off the top of your head of the operating budget of the 48,777?
I can work it, but it's going to be roughly 82% or so, but I'll work it real quick.
Okay, because I've just remembered different figures being thrown around over the years. No percentage.
It does vary a little bit. 84.76%.
Eighty-four, okay. Thank you, Mr. Johns.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions from Mr. Johns?
Not at the moment.
Yeah, exactly. That could change.
I'll stay tuned.
So we're at the point of the evening, I need a motion.
I would like to make a proposal, Mr. Williams.
Please, Ms. Carmack.
Okay, I first want to preface this with, one of the things that the school is asking for is level funding as of last year. I want to point out a couple of things regarding that. There, we are in a time where there are a lot of unknowns, but this is what we do know. We do know we most likely 100% will not get the same amount of revenue that we received last year. Will not have a 97.6 collection rate. We have no idea what our collection rate is going to be. This whole process is completely backwards to no fault of our own, but we need to pass this budget tonight before we even have set a tax rate. Speaking of that, a ton of our citizens are hurting financially right now, and a lot of them aren't going to have a job to go back to. And if we're not careful, we're going to be looking at a very significant tax increase for our citizens. That being said, to use Mr. Williams' favorite expression, "These are the times where you need to do more with less." And I am proposing that we reduce the school's budget to, and this is strictly from county appropriation, so just county from our general fund, because like Mr. Bailey pointed out, we're not going to have any change in the state or the feds, to $21,500. That's roughly an 8% reduction, I think, right? And we can, as we go along the process, if we're wrong and we're off base, we can certainly allocate and give you guys more money. But in these, this day and age, the thing we know, we know we're not going to have as much money as we did last year. So why are we going to continue funding things at the same level that we did last year? And I would want nothing more to give you the 23,346,000. But in these uncertain times, it's, I believe it's far more prudent to be fiscally conservative than have to go back and and not be able to fund you guys.
Do I have a second on the motion? No, do I have, do I have a second on the motion? Then we'll have discussion on the motion.
Understand.
I'll second, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, we have discussion on the motion.
I need the number. I can't under, I couldn't hear the number that Mrs. Carmack wants to go to.
21,500 for the, for our transfer from the general fund. That would take the overall budget to $46,931,35.
So a reduction of how many dollars from the 2020 budget?
Uh, it's 8%, so whatever the, we were at 23.
23,346, 750 was the number.
Yeah, I believe 1,846,000 of them. I have calculations all over the place. Hang on.
It's roughly 1.7 million.
Yeah.
Any other comments on the motion? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have a point of order question, Mr. Chairman. So I sense that there's going to be up to five proposals tonight. I don't know. I have a, an initial positive reaction to some of Mrs. Carmack's comments. And if I have a proposal that's slightly different, or if Mr. Bailey or Mr. Cox has one or yourself that is slightly different, so I'm assuming we have to vote on this motion, or can we keep it on the floor, keep it open, and then consider others and then backtrack? How do you want to do that, I guess is my question. I don't want to be clumsy here.
I think that's a good question. If you have a separate proposal, you know, then we can, you can either do a substitute motion or you can ask Mrs. Carmack to withdraw her motion and then make a recommendation that each one of us individually can go around the table and put forward what we are considering. And then, once all of us have been informed about what the others propose, then we can go forward with a motion on each one of them, and whoever gets three for us wins.
Mr. Chairman, there's another consideration. I know we all received about 3:20 this afternoon. We got an email with several, I guess it's five, different possible resolution drafts we got from Mr. Shardine. So probably those ought to be somehow put in the mix in case nobody brings them up. So I'm agreeing with what you're saying. This is a workshop, so I don't want to, I never want to tell another board member to remove or withdraw a motion or table it or anything, so I'm, that's up to you, Karen.
If we technically, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if we technically have to do that, I'll be happy to do that. You know where I stand. I know, but I'll be happy to.
Either way, it's a good jumping off point, but it's a workshop. So, you know, Mr. Chairman, my suggestion is let's get everything out there on the table and see where we are. And then maybe we go with one of these prefab resolutions that Brett sent us. Maybe we go with somebody else's suggestion, but, you know, kind of roll up the sleeves, I think.
Ms. Carmack, do you have a motion for us?
I'll remove it for the time being.
Motion to withdraw. I don't think we need to vote on that. I think she can do that by her own request. Let's come forward then with the individual supervisors' proposals so that, you know, before they get put forward as a motion, we'll all know when we're voting on whatever motions are filed us, which one we like best.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready.
Excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready. I have a proposal.
Okay. Mr. Cox, do you want to come forward with a proposal?
Yes, sir, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood, would you put up exhibit three and then be ready to put up exhibit four?
No, Mr. Cox, you're coming in.
Foggy.
Breaking up, kind of. Can we get some help, John?
Do a test, one, two, three, Mr. Cox.
Keep doing as exhibit two.
No, it's not.
It's very muffled. Oh, you can hear it.
Can you all hear me?
No.
Okay. Let me mute it and unmute it. Let me mute it and unmute it, if that helps. Can you hear me better now?
No, it's really muffled, it's echoey.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if you can hear me, why don't you go with the others while we figure out what's wrong with my voice?
I'm sorry, can?
So have Larry do his and the others.
Larry, would you, well, let me ask you a question, would you all like to first have Mr. Shardine go through the different proposals that he's, you know, sent out today?
I would.
Then let's do it, let's, let's open, let's open this thing up, Brett? Go through your five different resolutions that I have up here in front of me. If you will.
Yep. All right, so the, uh, first one is numbered R twenty twenty dash twenty nine, that's the one that is in your published board packet.
Twenty nine, what, D?
No, this is just twenty nine, this is the original kind of starting point resolution. So this would, um, adopt the school board operating budget only, um, and this would be for the fifty million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, this is what was recommended by the school board two nights ago.
Okay.
Right, and the.
Next one.
Yep. Then the second one we have is, uh, R twenty twenty dash twenty nine A. And this one would, uh, adopt the entire school budget as recommended by the school board, uh, again, in that fifty million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and six amount, but would only appropriate that level sufficient to issue employee contracts, uh, which would be forty million, seven hundred ninety three thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars.
So let me summarize, that would mean tonight we would adopt the school board budget as approved by the school board of fifty million, two oh five, and then tonight we would do an appropriation for the forty million, seven hundred and ninety three, and that would be for the salaries?
Correct.
Okay, that's straightforward.
Then we have R twenty twenty dash twenty nine B, um, that one would adopt the total school board operating budget, uh, but only commit to a level sufficient to issue employee contracts, so that would be the fifty million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, uh, with no appropriation tonight, uh, you would appropriate later in that instance. And then the next one is R twenty twenty dash twenty nine C. Give me one second, that one's loading. Okay, and that one would adopt, uh, the school board budget at forty million, seven hundred ninety three thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars, again, that is the, um, level for school contracts, uh, but there would be no appropriation, again, you would appropriate some amount later. And then the last one is R twenty twenty dash twenty nine D. And this one would adopt the school budget, um.
Brett, let me, for about the last three or four minutes we've been down, John has now brought you back up. Could you go again with the twenty nine D proposal? B, B, excuse me.
Going back to B, okay, yep. Let me pull that one back up. Okay, so R twenty twenty dash twenty nine B, uh, that would adopt the school budget as proposed by the school board, that fifty million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, but, uh, would make no appropriation, uh, appropriation would come at a later date. And then moving on to R twenty twenty dash twenty nine C.
Mr. Jim, I got a question.
Please, Ms. Norvick.
Brett, a question about twenty nine B, um, compared to, I guess, twenty nine A, what? Uh, in the now therefore paragraph, what exactly does it mean that the Board of Supervisors is going to commit to the funds for employment contracts? Contracts, they would love to be getting those out starting tomorrow, so do we not have to appropriate money at the time the contracts go out? Is it just a promissory thing, is that how we're doing it, as opposed to actually spending the money literally tonight?
Correct. Well, yes, you would, if you budget it, not appropriate it, uh, the school board would need, um, some kind of assurance that it would be funded, um, you know, at some point, so this would be that, that promissory.
Okay.
You have any more questions, Ms. Norvick? Okay. Brett, please continue.
Okay, so then R twenty twenty dash twenty nine C, uh, this would be adoption of the budget at the, um, contract amount, so forty million, seven hundred ninety three thousand, three hundred and fifty one dollars, uh, but no appropriation, appropriation would come at a later date. And then the final one that we had prepared is R twenty twenty dash twenty nine D. Uh, this would, uh, fund the budget at ninety percent, um, so that would be a total of four hundred and forty five million, three hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars, uh, again, adopting that budgeted amount only, no appropriation, appropriation would come later.
Good questions, Mr. Chairman.
Please, Ms. Norvick.
Uh, back on twenty nine C, Brett? The last whereas in the document, uh, similar to some of the other ones, it says the Board of, and I noticed the last whereas and the now therefore changes verbiage from one to another. My question is, the numbers indicate that we're committing to the funds for employment contracts, but the language in the last whereas says the Board of Supervisors wished to adopt the total school board operating budget, wouldn't that be the fifty million-ish instead of the forty million on this proposal? I'm a little confused what total means here, because it seemed to mean the entire proposed school board version.
Yeah, I think that's probably a language left, because we started with that original total, so we could, we could word that better. Ultimately, if you adopt that, and Mr. Lashley could correct me, what you adopt would be the amount in here, whether that's forty million or fifty million. But we could, i- if this is a resolution you choose to go with, we might be able to clean up that wording a little bit better to make it clear.
Okay, and then my second question is on the one that you just read, twenty nine D delta. The ninety percent version, the transfer amount is the ninety percent, but I also noticed the state amount, this is the only one where it changes, it goes down to twenty one, two eighty five. Can you explain the formula, if you will, the rules as to why that goes down?
We, Charlotte, did we just apply ninety across the board on that one?
That's what I did, because I wasn't exactly sure when I was ninety percent, I just assumed ninety percent of the proposed budget in total.
Okay, so actually, the state's actually going to give us the twenty three million, right? Okay, just checking to make sure, I didn't know if there was some hidden formula that VACO didn't teach us, thanks.
Okay, so that wraps up going through the five scenarios that Brett prepared for us tonight. Larry, do you want to go forward with a proposal, outlining what you're thinking?
Thank you. I had a lot of thoughts, and some of them came to me this afternoon, and instead of stumbling through them, I'm just going to read sort of, uh, what I wrote down. Um, so this, this will just take a couple of minutes, and I'm actually going to give you an exact number. So, um, backdrop, there are now thirty six and a half million Americans, or three million were reported today, more. So that's thirty six and a half million Americans newly unemployed in the last eight weeks. Um, hundreds are right here in Palatán, that number's going up. That is twenty two percent of the workforce of America that had jobs in February are now filing for unemployment claims of some type. These are the worst of times. So, no one knows, Mrs. Carmack said it right, no one knows where this is going, not Wall Street, not Main Street, not Washington DC, not Richmond, not even Palatán. This situation, as Mr. Cox has pointed out, changes at lightning speed, I think a couple of meetings ago, he, he used the phrase weekly, or at least very quickly, and he's correct. So this is the backdrop against which we must craft this budget, it's a challenge, needless to say. Uh, I, I pray that all ends well, but I think, uh, I'm in agreement with Ms. Carmack that it is the prudent course to plan for revenue shortfalls, they're coming for certain, with, in my opinion, required, um, corresponding spending cuts. It's my belief that the pain will be felt less by all of us if sacrifices shared by all. With that in mind, I'm reaffirming the proposal I sent in an email. I've had discussions on the phone with board members, but, um, the email is foible, uh, trying to be transparent, so I basically am going to paraphrase what I put in that email for clarity. And this is a couple of days ago, so I, I propose tonight as a temporary measure uh, for now, through the end of June, that the board adopt the ninety percent of the requested county transfer funds from the school budget. That's equal to twenty one million, twelve thousand, seventy five dollars. This will fund employee salaries for all school personnel, as Mr. Johns pointed out, that number is eighty four percent, this exceeds that. It'll prevent the need for layoffs and facilitate the timely issuance of our teacher contracts. It's a clean number, it's easy math, just take ninety percent, you're off and running. The total does not prematurely commit us to level funding, which I'm a bit uncomfortable with right now. In June, the board can reexamine several times, um, and adjust the remainder ten percent in light of any additional assistance and information from the Commonwealth of Virginia. We just received, uh, two point six million a couple of days ago, we didn't know that was coming. That can only be used for specific purposes directly related to responding to the virus, I understand that, but it shows you that we can have things turn on a dime, uh, and have very, very little, um, previous knowledge of that. So the goal with the proposal that I'm putting out is to maintain the standards of excellence for Palatán County schools. I believe that this proposal corresponds with option twenty nine D, now that we clarified the numbers. Furthermore, uh, I'm going to go a little bit further and propose what I think just about everybody on the board has voiced. Um, I'm proposing that the board adopt a policy with this budget, and that can be in June, which creates a new line item earmarked for the schools entitled Schools Revenue Stabilization Fund, similar in operation to the Schools Capital Maintenance Reserve line item in the county budget. And this fund would capture year-end cash savings from our schools and place it in reserve for their later use, serving as a shock absorber for further economic shortfalls. This would prevent the school board and staff from feeling pressured to use it or lose it, as pertains to spending. As with the CMR fund, appropriating funds would prompt cooperation between the two boards, which I think is a very healthy thing. In summary, um, in keeping with the sentiment that I've been picking up from this board to plan for the worst, but hope for the best, I would rather budget for the worst lower amount now and hope to give more as we gain more clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Norvick. Mr. Cox?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Wood, would you put up exhibit, they're labeled A, A, B, uh, one, two, three, and four, exhibit three? All right, this is from Dr. Jones's presentation, uh, in April, where he laid out the twenty twenty one possible areas for reduction. You've all seen these, and he said further reductions would likely lead to reducing positions and/or benefits. So, the, if that is correct, uh, I don't believe the ninety percent cut is going to avoid reduction in staff on the school side, now, Mr. Wood, would you go to the la, to the next exhibit, please?
Go with Mr. Norvick, Ms. Norvick has a, a comment, please.
Mr. Cox, um, to clarify my own.
One, one, one second, please, can I finish, Mr. Wood is putting another, another exhibit up for me, I'm sorry.
All right, I just did, I wanted to save time here, but that's all right.
Okay, so here is my proposal. This was the advertised budget, twenty four million, two fifty one, and I took, uh, Dr. Jones at his word, scroll down, John. And that totals up to, uh, reductions that he listed total up to a million, two seventy nine, nine hundred. That would be the transfer for twenty twenty one of twenty two million, nine hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and eighty eight dollars, that's a one point six percent reduction. Now, we have the ability, uh, that's the budget, I would not, that would not be the appropriation, I, I, I would, I would urge us to go to a quarterly appropriations so that we're constantly reviewing the budget. We can reduce it, uh, we're not going to have an opportunity to raise it, I can promise you that. But in fact, this keeps us from initially getting into the bone and reducing headcount, uh, in the school, I don't think we have to do that yet. This reduces the transfer from twenty twenty by three hundred and seventy five thousand, four hundred and sixty two dollars, and I think preserves the basis for the school as we hopefully get back to work in the fall, and we need all of those teachers, we don't need fewer teachers. So, that's it, I'm sorry, Mr. Norvick, did you have a question?
Uh, it was over, thank you, sir, um, it was a point of clarification, Bill, um, I'm not proposing a ten percent cut. I'm proposing that as a starting point tonight, which will prevent the need for layoffs, it more than covers the eighty four percent required for contracts, so I, I am not proposing layoffs, and as I said, the remainder ten percent, we can talk about several times in our meetings between now and the deadline of June thirtieth, we have a meeting the last week of June. I would suspect that the ninety percent number would rise, so I, I am not proposing a ten percent cut, I am proposing an initial number to get the contracts out as a jumping off point, and then discuss the remaining ten percent between now and six weeks from now.
Got you, totally, totally misunderstood, Ms. Norvick, my apology.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other comments, board members? I'd like to make a few comments myself. Going back to Mrs. Carmack's statement that the school board was requesting level funding, actually, that's not correct. We had proposed level funding back in January, something that all the other jurisdictions are now doing, because we thought we were in normal times. We really didn't find out that we were in deep trouble until probably around the middle of March. Since that time, we, all of us, have been concentrated on what are we doing to keep providing essential services in this county? And how in the world are we going to be funding a budget going forward in the worst of times? So we never changed the direction to the board, to the school board, we never told them a different number. And that's because of all the other stuff that was swirling around us at that time. So I'm not blaming anybody for that. But the school board did and acted on information that we said that was where we wanted to go. Now, since that time, particularly the, since March fifteenth, we have learned volumes more about our situation, because as I said several meetings ago, I see butter in the rearview mirror than I see going forward in these times. So I suggest and strongly recommend that any percent reductions that are being proposed tonight first be considered by the school board, giving them an opportunity, we've got two meetings, one with a joint school board meeting, one with a budget meeting, give them an opportunity to respond to whatever percent cuts or cuts scenarios, if you want to do different percents. and let them come back and show what the budget would look like and have the discussion with us. I think we owe it to each other. We're one county. We need to know if we're proposing something, how does it affect their budget? Give them an opportunity to come and present, explain, and we can have that discussion and I think make a better decision going forward. Going back to Mr. Norvik's proposal, I support the 90% tonight to cover, you know, the salary contracts. I also propose that, you know, we reexamine, you know, the remaining 10%, but incorporate what I believe Mr. Barley and what Mrs. Carmack are looking for is a percent reduction in the transfer. Provide the school board with that number and then let them come and show what that looks like in their revised budget because we are changing what we originally had proposed to them. So I think that's something we should do, we want to do because we're all partners here in the county on this budget. Any other comments?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Take me through how that works. I almost understand it. I understand the 90%, but in terms of the meetings going forward and what would we be-
80% Bill. If you want to do the 9% as Mr. Norvik has proposed, fine. Okay? We know 85% of the budget is salaries. So the 9% would cover the salaries, correct?
Correct. And to the next meetings, what would we be doing in the next?
So the guidance tonight would be to go forward with the amount of, it could be a different percentage, I don't care, but the remaining percentage, we would leave open until we got information back, giving new guidance to the school board about the percent reduction or reductions, if you wanted to do different scenarios of different amounts. Give them the opportunity to respond back and show what that would look like in their budget. And then we could have that discussion at the joint school board meeting. That's what those meetings are for. And then after those discussions, we could have continuing dialogue in our budget workshop and then make some type of decision on the remaining 10% with better information, fully understanding what the impacts would be.
What would we appropriate?
That will be determined at the end of June when we adopt the budget. We will, we can appropriate on June 29th, and we can appropriate the first quarter if we choose to do quarterly.
We don't have to appropriate anything for the schools this evening?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Norvik.
I like the overall strategy. We have, I'm looking at the calendar. I think we have five meetings, and we actually have more if we wanted to add to the agenda, you know, in our strategic planning or something like that. So we have lots of opportunities to hash this out. I think probably to everybody's satisfaction in the end. And specifically, you mentioned the workshop with the school board. That's actually placed rather nicely because we have one more budget workshop among us, and then we have the 11th with the school board, and they can give feedback. And then we have at least three more budget meetings to take that information that you're talking about and craft a plan, having had their input to the proposal. I like that.
Mr. Chairman? Please, Mr. Barley. I have a question for Mr. Johns, if I can ask him that.
Please, please.
When do you need to issue your contracts?
We normally issue those right after this meeting where the board adopts and appropriates. We would like to issue them next week because, you know, we do have other school divisions that are trying to hire some of our teachers. So we would like to issue them as soon as we can. If the board adopts a budget number that is sufficient for us to issue contracts, we can go ahead and do that now. And as Mr. Williams said, whether or without the appropriation, because we know the adopted amount that you're doing, your intent has clearly been stated tonight. It is to enable us to issue contracts. So we could go ahead and do those next week.
So if we adopted the amount at 90% tonight, that enables you to offer the staff their contracts next week?
Yes, sir.
My question is, at the 90%, are are you talking, Mr. Chairman, 90%? There's a, I was thinking, one of these had a percentage on it. Was one of these proposals at 90%?
Yeah, the-
29D, but it doesn't say. Or does it?
Yeah, see, that proposal that the 90%, that's 90% of the entire budget.
You have to wordsmith that.
And it was, Charlotte had assumed that we were doing all of it. So we have to work that backwards a little bit? Is that where you're going with that?
You're exactly right, Mr. Barley. Mr. Barley hit an important point. What we're really talking about is the transfer amount, aren't we? Because we don't reduce the other things in Mr. Johns's budget that he gets from the state. For example, that's his. Okay? So what we're really talking about is the transfer, correct?
Transfer from the general fund.
Transfer from us, from the general fund.
I'll reread it, David.
Please.
I read, "The board adopt 90% of the requested county transfer funds in the school budget, which comes out to the 21 million instead of the 23." So good catch because I didn't read that last whereas again says total school operating budget with the 90% in there, and that is incorrect the way it's written. So good catch, Mr. Barley. So it would be 90% of the county transfer.
Okay, so what does that number look like? And what does that number look like in comparison to the 8% cut?
On your question, you know, when you talk about the 90%, what's the 90% of?
I think we just established it's going to be, we're talking about the transfer. So what I want to understand from staff, from Charlotte and Brett, if 90% is what dollar amount of the transfer amount that we originally planned to do, what was 23 million something? What does that mean if we do 90% of that 23 million that we originally approached? Yeah. So what does that number look like?
21,001,012.
12,075.
11 million, okay.
Yep.
What did your number look like, Mrs. Carmack, when you recommended the 8% cut to the transfer?
Roughly 21,500.
Do we have a wash here? That's why I'm-
Now it's Mr. Barley's turn.
Well, I just, I want to make sure I understand clearly what we're doing.
Sure.
We're talking about a lot of money that belongs to taxpayers. And when we're saying 90%, are we saying tonight that we will do 90% of the level funding amount, which is 23,346,700? 346,750? Is that what we're saying? We're going to adopt that percentage, 90% of that number?
The 90% that I gave in my proposal, that I was talking about anyway, was off of the 23,650,000 proposed transfer.
Let me say this one more time.
Which turns out to be 21,012,000.
I can't reduce what Larry's getting from the state. Okay, so let's move on. I think we're fairly well established now. This has to do with the transfer, okay? So the only question is, it's two questions. What is the number for the 9%? And then what is the number? I believe, Karen, you said your number was 21,500 with the 800. So do the two match? If they do match, if they're close, I'm going to leave that to y'all. Then at that point, you know, we're saying we're going to go back to work in between now and June 29th. We're going to have the meetings on the budget with the joint meeting with the school board. We're going to ask them, what does that look like with a new percentage reduction or different percentages? You can say 8, 6, 4, 2. Have them come back, show the budgets, have the discussion, understand how it's going to play out, and then make a decision on the remaining 10% on June 29th and then do your quarterly appropriation for the first quarter. Mr. Norvik?
I think Mr. Barley is thinking of a different jumping off number or for the 90%, or you have a different number altogether. And I would like to hear your proposal.
I think, you know, I think the number is relatively close between the 21.5 and the 21.12. The concern that I have is, as we go forward, what we're talking about doing is we're just going to give that number to the schools to go figure out how it works into their budget and how they can make it fit or not make it fit. And what are going to be the, what's it going to look like? And then come back in June and say, well, that number didn't quite work and it looks like we're going to have to cut five people. So can you guys give us the other 10%? Is that?
No, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is, if you want to give a percentage reduction to the schools, we need to give that to them and give them an opportunity to show how that plays through their budget, how they will meet that reduction number. That's what we're saying, okay?
That's what he's saying. I see the danger, so-
It's a big danger.
It's a big danger.
We're going to hand the school board this hugely low number, and then they're going to come back and say, you just killed us, right?
Well, no, no.
So you're looking for a different sort of proposal?
I want to tell you what, when I came here tonight was to, because it's been said, this needs to happen. I listened to the school board meeting the other night that you guys had, Mr. Johns, and heard what was said there. And I think that it was all, I mean, even from what was passed out, you know, their expectations, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Johns or school board, was that we would give them a number tonight. They would be able to offer their contracts to their teachers and staff, whoever gets contracts, by the 18th of May. That's the date, I think, that was used.
Yes.
It could be, thank you. I didn't remember exactly. And so I came fully prepared to make a decision. And let's move on. It's just a tough decision. I mean, it's bad to go through this, but everybody in this county is going through it. Every business owner is going through it. Every taxpayer is going through it. The school board went through it, Dr. Johns, or Mr. Johns, Dr. Jones. I mean, it's very frustrating and it's very challenging for everybody that's been going through this to try and figure out, how do we get these numbers to work? We're in a situation that is, we've never been in before. We're trying to figure out how much money we can give the school system and then how much money we can give the county. And we haven't even established how much revenue we have, which once we establish, we don't know what we're going to get. We don't know the amount of money we're going to get. So I'm in the boat of be as conservative as you can be. Be below conservative. And if we come out with revenue that exceeds what we're planning or thinking we're going to get, then we can change the budget and add more funding into the schools. Nobody wants to see any staff cut from the school or anywhere in regards to Palatine County. We have a great school system, and I certainly don't want to be the one that says, you know, let's make a cut and without any thought, just go do it. And it affects the service that we provide in the school system. I don't think that's the purpose. For me, it's not. I've spent a lot of time looking at this budget and everyone else up here has. I know I heard from the school board the other night, you guys have spent an enormous amount of time. Mr. Johns has been very heavily involved. I'm prepared to make a decision and move forward here. And it's not a decision that I'm taking lightly at all.
Thank you, Mr. Barley. I would only have one comment, you know, to all of your many good points. And that is, Mr. Johns has said just now that if we do a lesser appropriation, 9%, that that will meet his needs to do contracts. Okay? So I just wanted to make a clarifying point. Mr. Norvik?
Mike brings up a good point, and I didn't even realize it when I made my proposal. I'm not withdrawing the proposal, and I think our numbers are going to be pretty close anyway. So there's nothing up here that I see yet that's a deal killer. However, you do bring up a good point, Mike, and that is if we send, you know, the 21 and 1/2 or the 21.12 or a number that you like over to the schools to come back and, as you said, David, you know, show us what does that look like with that number? That's probably, it's probably not our intent right now. I'm wondering if we should ask the schools to come back with like a, you know, a 2% and a 5% drop and see what that does. And we know what the 10% number is. So if we have them do the homework on, let's say, a 2% down, a 5% down, then we've got a range there that we can look at, and then we'll know from the school board's own mouth, how does that affect us? Does it result in layoffs? Does it result in less instruction time? What does that do to, you know, school buses and all of that? So I'm throwing that out.
That's what I thought I said in my comments earlier, Mr. Norvik, was you could do a series of percent cuts, you know, of different ranges. But, you know, I agree with you.
Okay, I-
I agree with you.
I thought you were talking about us.
I don't think you have to say 8%, but you can, we can do 2%, come back with 5%, but have the discussion, have the meeting. And again, like I said, give them the guidance that we would want to give at this particular point in time.
Well, and one more remark, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mike, I'm a lot like you in the sense of I want to accomplish the mission and move on to the next one. And, you know, that's kind of how I was trained. I would love to, and I think Mr. Cox is probably as close as anybody to wanting to put a bow on this and just get it done and present it and have it clean. But Mr. Williams said something tonight that is a good reminder, and I wrote it down and I actually put quotes around it. He says, "We know volumes more now than we did when this started back in the middle of March." And we still have till the end of June. Between now and then, they are discussing in Washington, DC, how to get an aid package. The HEROES Act is probably dead as its current iteration, but there's going to be something else discussed. And the state may change things as far as who they're going to give money to locality-wise. The 2.6 million that just dropped out of the sky, I learned by reading the newspaper two days ago. I didn't know that was coming. The economy is going to do something in the next six weeks. There's just a lot of moving parts here, and I would love to do a final number tonight. I'd love to pass the entire school budget tonight. Mr. Williams and I have been doing this together for a number of years, and that's pretty much what we've done. But like I said at the very beginning, this is not a normal budget. This is not a normal budget time. So I want to see what happens between now and the last week of June. That's where I am. So there you go. I sense the urgency, but I think we need to read the tea leaves more.
Mr. Chairman? I concur with all that. I don't have a problem. The only thing I do want to iterate is I am going to err on the side of being more conservative with this. I mean, I just, I do want to emphasize that because even at the end of June, we still will not know what our collection rate is.
Right.
And we're still not going to know some of the other, you know, pertinent questions that we need to have answered. I mean, at that point, we will have a tax rate, you know? We'll have a set tax rate. But it's not like, you know, we're going to hit June 30th and we're going to have, you know, be able to pull a rabbit out of a hat and be able to tell exactly what it's going to look like. So that's all. Thank you.
Another comment?
Please, Mr. Norvik.
That's true, totally true. But you're right, we will have a tax rate. That'll be a known number.
Yes.
And we can apply our best guess to a known number. That's better than what we have now. And the other thing- And the other thing is, if we get additional aid, you know, the 2.6 million, let's say we actually applied it in total to all the things that we are allowed to use it for, PPE gear, and, you know, overtime pay, and those kind of things, boxes of latex gloves, let's say we, we were able to use $2 million of that. That definitely does affect, you know, now our county revenue from real estate doesn't have to go to buy that PPE gear, now we can put that somewhere else. And, you know, if we get another aid package of a couple million bucks, that might really change what we want to do with this budget. So it's, you see what I'm going, it's not a direct correlation.
Right, right.
But it does free us up some money to put somewhere that we might not have otherwise. So, I agree with what you're saying. Conservative is definitely where I am right now, but I'm not ready to do a final package.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Byerly.
To echo off what Ms. Carmack said, in having been in business, and understanding a little bit of how this works, the one thing that we know is our expenses. I think the schools know their expenses, I think Palatine County knows their expenses, and the one thing we don't know, and we don't have the crystal ball for, is our revenues. That's the real kicker for this whole deal. I don't want to approve a budget, come back six months later, and say, we can't fulfill that budget obligation that we made to you. I don't want to do that, I don't want to be in that situation. I'm going to go, I'm going to use that word of being beyond conservative. I think that we have great leaders in our school, I think that they can find a way to make this happen and work. They have the same desires that we do to provide the great service, and educate our kids in this, in this county. And the one point that I'll make, and I'll finish this up, is, as Mr. Norvick says, if this federal money comes in, and if we get some aid in that, speaking for myself only, as Mr. Cox has said before, if I win the lottery tomorrow, I probably might miss the next meeting. And the point is, is it's a big if. I'm not going to count on any of that money, personally speaking. When I, when I look at what the taxpayers' money that we're stewards of, the businesses, the business owners, their money we're stewards of, they pay taxes in this county, I'm not going to depend on whether the federal government's going to write us a check or not, and then tell us how we can use it, when we can use it, where we can use it, and then say, I'm going to come and audit you, and if you're not in compliance with our criteria, you owe us the money back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. Okay, so I think now we're back to, does anybody have a proposal that they would like?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was having, I have to cut my speaker off, because you're getting feedback, and I fumbled with it. I have a question, I have a question.
Please.
From Mr. Byerly. Mr. Byerly, maybe I've missed it, I understand what you said, but do you have a number?
Do I have a number?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
If Mr. Chairman will allow me, I can go down that road with you real quick.
Please, Mr. Byerly, if.
I'll tell you, you know, from my perspective, in what I've looked at, I've taken the budget that we have now, that the schools have now, the 48, 206, 597, and that's this year. And I go back to the year before, which is the year 2018-19, fiscal year 19, and the budget at that time was 47 million, which is coincidentally the number that I think Ms. Carmack used earlier, when she was coming up with her number. And as I said, my number was very close to her number, but the way I arrived at my number, and tried to be fair in how we do this, because I think everybody is going to have pain, and we need to spread it out as much as we can. Palatine County Schools, in that year, had 4,318 students enrolled. This year, they're projecting 12 more students, 4330. In 2018-19 school year, they had 326 teachers. This year, they're projecting 326 teachers. In 1819, they had 83 paraprofessionals. This year, they're, they're projecting 20, excuse me, 84. They had 83 and 84. So the numbers are basically the same in that timeframe, and how they use their 47 The cut that I looked at, if I use their 48.7 million, is a 3.5% cut, and it goes to 46,996,000. And I subtract out the federal money, the state money, the local, the other, other local money, and I come to a number of 26, or excuse me, 21,565,584 dollars.
So you and Mrs. Carmack are the same?
Yeah.
Within 65,000. With, with all of that being said, in 2018 and 19, we didn't have solar panels on the roofs of these schools, nor did we have the train energy system, which are both, I think, supposed to save us a lot of money in regards to the electric bill at the schools. I can go on, and we can get into the buses, but I think that's the gist of where I'm at with it. Same teachers, same students, same paraprofessionals, as we have this year projected, and I'm looking at 3.5%. And if you go from, that's from what they, the proposal they made Tuesday night. If I go from the budget they had last year, that we're in now, the current year, 48.2, it's a 2.4% cut. 2.4. And I've been one that, you know, when you cut, you cut from what you have, not from what you've asked to have. That's a cut.
That's true.
What you have, you cut from that, not from what you asked to have. And, you know, I can't tell you, I listened to the school board the other night at the meeting, and they're doing a great job. I mean, I can't, you know, I'm not debating that, I think the Board of Supervisors, everybody's done a lot. We have great schools. I'm not looking to diminish that in any way, but I am looking to take care of the taxpayers' money, and still get the same product.
So, you're roughly, you're roughly 21.5, that's where Mrs. Carmack is, Mr. Norvick's a little less than that. And.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Williams, I, I'd like what you had to say a long time ago, okay? In terms of the process, in terms of the 90%, which I think satisfies those people on the stage with you, and I would be happy to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Board members, I think it's time. I'm ready for a proposal for adoption.
Mr. Chairman, it looked like Ms. Schubert might have wanted to say something. Charlotte, did you?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Brett.
I said, it looked like Charlotte was making a motion, not a motion, but looked like she.
Sorry, Charlotte, you can, you can join us, you know, we need all the help we can get.
I mean, you guys have to still decide what you want to adopt. What I do want to more talk about is budget process, because we, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure, because we keep talking about we have till June 29th, which you do have till June 29th to finalize, but we have to advertise for a public hearing by the 10th of June, which means by the 1st, it goes in the paper on the 10th, I have to send it by the 4th, because our paper only runs on Wednesday, so I have to advertise at least seven days before the public hearing, for us, it turns into 10 days before the public hearing. So, again, you can advertise a budget that you, you can then reduce later, I just don't want everybody to forget that we still have to come up with something to advertise for the county in the paper, I have to send it to them by June 4th. So we don't actually have six weeks to de, to decide what we want to advertise, we have six weeks to finalize what we're going to do.
Charlotte, I'm quite certain we're going to have to advertise, you know, the, probably the whole amount, because as we work through that remaining 10%, we're not going to have resolution, I think by the time you need to advertise it.
That is true, but tonight you have to adopt something for the school.
Well, tonight, you know, we will adopt something, we'll either adopt.
You're talking about changing it between now and.
Proposals that you've gotten from us, or proposal by a board member.
Correct. And I also like to point out that if we leave it at the 90%, even by June 29th, whatever, or whatever your number is, when you do amend an adopted budget that is over 1% of that original adopted budget, you have to advertise, have a public hearing again. So unless Tom wants to weigh in, because we're only doing part of our budget, when I've normally done those types of public hearings, it's the entire budget if we amend, which includes schools and county. So this is getting a little bit in some procedural that I haven't worked with before. So, just want to keep those things in mind, that there are some code requirements when we amend budgets, and when we adopt, and the timing of all of that.
That changes everything.
Yeah, that totally changes everything, because.
Okay. So you're telling us the cutoff date for advertising, and because it would be more than 1%, obviously, that we would have to do it by what date?
Well, for our, so, for the county's budget, which only includes the county's transfer to the schools, because we would have already adopted the school side, needs to be in the paper, I need to know so I can send it to the paper by June the 4th, in order to advertise on June the 10th. So I guess I may need Tom's help on this, as far as if we adopt 90% on the school side tonight, and then you decide to amend that budget by June 29th, the school's budget, and it's over 1%, would we need another public hearing and a, to amend the school's budget? Normally, I look at it together.
If, if the combined budget goes over 1% increase, which I assume it would, if you adjusted the school from the theoretical 90 to 100, if that number takes our combined budget over 1%, yes, we'd have to have another public hearing.
But if they did it between now and when we advertised for our full county budget, then that would satisfy that public hearing for the school.
That's, that 1% is amendment of an adopted budget.
Right.
So as long as the budget hasn't been adopted yet, we're fine. It's.
But if we adopt the school's budget tonight, technically, that is adopted. So that's where I'm getting my procedural confusion on that. But the whole budget is.
If we adopt a budget, if we adopt a budget tonight, okay, at 90%, and then we have to do something, for Charlotte, I think she said by June 3rd, because, is that correct? All right.
Yes.
Because the remaining 10%, would be representative of being greater than the 1% that requires us to have a public hearing, is that correct?
I, I think we're fine here, let me explain why I think we're fine.
Okay, please, I'd like to hear that.
Let's just assume we do the 90% tonight. So you've adopted the school's budget at 90%, but what I'm hearing is, we're going to advertise the total budget at 100% of where we are. So we will, the advertised budget that we'll have the public hearing on will be the 100%. So if we slide some of that money into the school again, we've not exceeded the 100% advertised budget, so we're fine.
That was where, yeah, yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying. If you.
If I understand, so you're saying because we're going to be advertising the whole county budget, which will include the schools, that that will negate the 1% rule, because it'll be diluted?
Well, because you're going to advertise the school at the 100, I'm assuming.
And you're talking about just the school transfer, we don't have to re-advertise the whole school's budget, just our portion of the transfer.
Okay.
You're going to adopt the school's budget tonight, but then the one you're advertising, our global county budget, which includes the school, isn't, it's not being amended yet. So there's no, this 1% is an amended issue, so an amendment issue. So when we adopt the global county budget, we're fine. So whatever we do with the schools is fine, because it rolls into the global county budget that we're going to approve later.
Charlotte, does that make you happy?
Yeah, I think what he's saying, I get, I get what he's saying, when we, when we advertise the county's budget, you would probably put the whole 23, 346, 750 in there, and then you can decide where that difference will end up being, once you adopt on June 29th.
We're, we're back on, we're back on the same course we were before.
Yes, but I did want to point out that we did have to have something to advertise for the county side by June 3rd, to meet the code requirements of public hearing.
Thank you for bringing it up, we don't want to make any missteps at this point.
No, sir.
All right, so I'll go back.
What's our others, the, you know what, I'll go with my original proposal.
Okay.
The 21.5, that's where I'm at.
All right, so your proposal is what, Ms. Carmack?
My proposal, 8% reduction from the county transfer from the general fund, $21,500, 21,500.
21,500,000.
Thank you. And as far as appropriations, we don't appropriate until June, and we do quarterly appropriations.
I have a motion, do I have a second on a motion, Mr. Byerly?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just a little. We've been voicing we want the most conservative. I've heard that a couple times, and I said it myself. 21.12 is more conservative than 21.5. We're close, so this isn't a battle looming here, but if we want to consider 90% for easy math, and it is the lowest number, that's the most conservative to start working from. Just bringing it up.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Or Mr. Cox?
Are we proposing a number or a percentage?
It will be a number, when it's put out on the actual resolution.
No, what I need for the proposal, you know, the.
90%.
Should match, in other words, if you say 8%, it should be exactly 8%, if you say a number of 21,500,000. So you can do it either way, you can just say 8% and apply it to the current transfer amount of 23 million, or you can say the number that you would like to reduce it by, or you can say both, as long as the two match.
I just, I just want clarity on what I'm, what you know.
21,500,000, $500,000, that's just going to be easier, because it's like 8.1% or something. I mean, do you want me to?
I want you to make your proposal that you're happy with, and so if, if, the proposal is, I understand this before us tonight, is to reduce the current transfer, proposed transfer amount by 21,500,000.
No, 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 that, that's not the reduction, that is what I am proposing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You're exactly right. If they're transferring, we transfer to the schools, from us, the 21,500,000 dollars for transfer.
Correct.
My apologies. I have a second on a motion, any additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
In, in listening to what Mr. Norvick said there, in regards to his reference of being as conservative, as beyond conservative, is what I've said, the, when we, the way I understand what Ms. Carmack's motion is, and I seconded it, is, there's no working beyond the 21.5. That's the number that we transfer, and we move on. So we're not going to a number that we're going to present, and come back and look at, if I'm, got this right, and I want to make sure I understood what I seconded.
Yes.
It's 21.5, and the school's transfer is done, and we move on to the county budget.
Mr. Chairman.
That is my understanding, but with also the understanding that, you know, we've received guidance that you can amend your budget at any time, is that correct, Mr. Latchner?
Yeah, that's correct, you can make as many amendments as you need to after we adopt.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, that is my intent.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, I got a question.
Please.
What, Mike, what do you mean?
No, I was looking at Mr. Norvick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cox?
No eye contact with this stuff. Go ahead.
Mr. Cox?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What Mr. Byerly. What Mr. Barley said is not what I understood we were doing.
Same here, go ahead and ask it, Bill.
Okay, my understanding that, I mean, Mr. Norvig corrected me a little while ago, and that we are setting a floor, and we're going to take a look at the impact of that, and, Mr. Chairman, as you mentioned, involve the schools in this discussion, and that might mean that the number, the final number, might be something other than 21.5. But that would, is something that would evolve out of discussions involving the schools and understanding exactly what we're, what we're forcing to happen with 21.5. So it's not, what I heard is, we're not finished with this, we're just starting this process again with the school. And that I would support.
That was my proposal, Mr. Cox, and I, I share your confusion of where we're going now, but what you said just encapsulated what I proposed.
Okay, I see that as a separate proposal, that's how I understood that was being proposed with this motion, this motion, let me be clear, Mrs. Carmack has put forward that the transfer amount from the county to the schools is 21 million 500,000, that's it. With the caveat that with the other recommendation that we do quarterly appropriation.
Quarterly appropriations and Mr. Williams, as we go throughout the whole year, if we get more monies, we can do that differently, but I don't see things changing in a month, that's where I'm at.
Well, we've made the point repeatedly now that we can amend any budget as we go, go forward, okay? The plan is not, at this point, to do what Mr. Cox and Mr. Norvig thought they understood, and that was involving the school board with bringing back scenarios of 2% or 5% reductions in their budget for our consideration later in June. Am I correct, all board members?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and, and I, you're, to me, you're very clear, and, and I agree with what you're saying, and as long as Mr. Cox and Mr. Norvig both understand that anywhere down the road, we can amend this budget.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion, I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt and, and throw some water on the parade, but may I, may I suggest that the, the motion be bifurcated, because it's, it's basically a compound motion, half of it's dealing with the budget, half of it's dealing with appropriation. So I would recommend two separate motions, first motion on the budget, and then if, if Supervisor Carmack wants to make another motion on how appropriation is going to happen, I think it's cleaner since they're two different subject matters, that we don't have them in a compound motion.
We agree, thank you, Tom. All right, Mrs. Carmack, would you like to make a second motion that we will vote on after we vote on your first motion?
Sure.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion now, or do you want us to go forward with just voting on?
Go ahead and vote on the first one that I put out there, because if that's dead.
Then we will make another motion about doing quarterly appropriations.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sharnon, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, again, I hate to, hate to be a wet blanket, but just maybe restate the actual motion that everybody's voting on, just so it's clear in the record.
I will restate the motion, if Mrs. Carmack wants to do it, please.
I move that we transfer from the county's general fund to the school board, or to the school's fund for the next fiscal year, 21 million 500,000.
Is everyone clear?
And, and adoption of their budget with that modified figure, because we're technically, we're adopting their budget.
Yes, we're adopting, yes. And the bud, the complete budget amount would be 46 million 931,035.
No.
Like that.
That's right.
What?
I don't think that math is right.
It's got to match, Karen. I think it's easier if you leave all the last part.
That is the, that's the right math, that's, that's right math.
I need a clean motion.
23, 346 is being reduced to 21.
21, excuse me, it's being reduced, no, excuse me, the transfer amount is 21 million 500,000.
Right, so it's being reduced by 1.8 million.
Okay, yes.
So 5205906 minus 1.8 million is something more than 46 million.
You're just looking at the operating funds, right? Karen?
Yes, I was looking, you're correct.
As Tom is saying, you need to do.
I did not add in the.
Same cafeteria.
I, I apologize, guys, I mean, I'm not, you know.
Nope, no worries.
I mean, I may be speaking, I just thought that was the budget that we're looking at.
So what do I need to do to make this easy tonight? Can I put the, do I have to do the cumulative amount?
I think the simplest thing we do, you move for the adoption of the budget with a transfer of the amount of 21 million 500,000. Is that clean, Tom?
Yeah, adoption of the proposed budget with the change that we're reducing the transfer from the general fund to the new number of 21 million 500,000.
Okay.
That is the motion.
Charlotte, is that good, does that compute with you?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have agreement that we have a clean motion. Brett, would you please call the roll?
I have a question, sir.
Please.
For clarity before I vote.
Please.
Somewhere we got derailed from working with the school board to capture back the remainder or portion of the remainder. So what, which motion, this one or the next one, is tied to working with the school board over the next six weeks as Mr. Cox?
I will be happy to make that motion next, because right now, this is not part of that motion, I think we've clarified that with Mr. Barley and with Mrs. Carmack.
Making sure.
But I will be glad to, because that's my intent, okay? That we involve the school board, just like I said, but right now, we have a motion before us. Now, Brett, please call the roll.
Mr. Norvig.
Aye.
Mr. Barley.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
I'm confused, if people are like, wait a minute, we are voting on 21.5, correct?
Correct.
You're voting on 5, no discussion.
You're voting.
Back and forth with the school.
We've had a discussion.
In that budget.
You're voting on a global budget that's been amended by reducing the 23, 346, 750. This is why I brought up the next motion, and if we're only going to be doing quarterly and we're not working with the school board over the next six weeks, I don't want that. So that's why I asked, is this connected? So it.
As this motion reads today, right now, it does not include working with the school board, say, transfer in the amount, instead of 23 million something, it's transfer in that is 21 million 500. That's it, and then Mrs. Carmack is going to come forward with another motion for us to vote on to do quarterly appropriations, we will vote on that. Then there will be another proposal that I'll put forward, working with the schools and doing percentage reductions, and having them bring that back to us so that we can look at it and make decisions on the percentage reductions, is how that's reflected in their budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
If Mrs. Carmack's proposal is not successful, we don't need to vote on appropriations on it.
Correct, my appropriation's useless at that point.
If it is successful, then there will not be another vote, there will not be another proposal.
We have to adopt the budget tonight.
I understand that, if Mrs. Carmack's proposal, motion, is ratified by three people, there will not be another vote.
No, if it's ratified by three people, we're, we're going home and watch Gunsmoke Rewrote.
And if it, but if, if Mrs. Carmack's proposal is not affirmed by three people, then a vote on apportioning her proposal will not be needed.
Lost me.
He's correct, I'm going to, if my promotion, my motion looks like it's going to lose, there's no point me voting or bringing a motion for appropriation because my motion lost, I can't appropriate anything because it's dead.
It's a separate issue, as Tom pointed out, it's a separate issue, it's a way of appropriating the budget, whether or not we do, you know, 90%, whether we do a reduction down to 21.5, we still, this is a separate way of doing appropriation, different from what we do
Right, that's, that's why I suggested bifurcating the motion, motion one is, whatever it is, approve a budget, and then if you want appropriation, that would follow approval of a budget, because it's relevant to work on appro, well, it isn't, because it affects the rest of the county budget, but it would pre, be premature. So motion one is approve a budget, whatever that number may be, and then motion two, if Ms. Carmack wants to bring it, would be to.
Different way, doing quarterly appropriations, which is different from the way we do it today. So whatever we do with the adoption of the budget with the schools, quarterly appropriations needs to be voted on. Now, I'm going to begin the roll call again. Is everybody clear? Please call the roll, Mr. Sharnon.
Mr. Norvig?
No.
Mr. Barley?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mrs. Carmack?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Well, Mrs. Carmack, would you like to make a motion as to how we're going to be appropriating to the school board going forward?
Mr., one second, please, what was Mr. Williams' vote, I couldn't hear?
No.
Okay, now there's no reason to, she has nothing to apportion.
She's not, but we're voting on how we plan, whatever it is that we appropriate to the schools, we're saying we're going to do quarterly appropriations instead of the way we're doing it today.
We don't do the appropriations until we have a budget, which we don't have voted on yet, that was just voted down.
We're bifurcating, but, you know, just like the county attorney said, this is a method of appropriation that we're saying we're going to do going forward.
That would, that should occur after the vote on whatever the budget amount is, Mr. Williams.
Okay, Mr. Latchner, is that true, what Mr. Cox is saying, or can I go forward with the vote on how we're going to appropriate the school board budget next year?
Well, I mean, you haven't adopted a budget yet, but you theoretically could set a policy on appropriation. Now remember, appropriation.
Let's move on, we're done, okay, I need a motion for the next proposal for how we're going to do a budget for the school board. Now, I'm going to propose that we go forward with 90% of the level funding transfer that we had proposed tonight, and that we work with the school board to bring back to us different scenarios of what the funding will look like for an 8% reduction, which has been previously proposed, and for a 5 and a 2% reduction. And I propose that we will work with the school board to be able to understand what those scenarios look like, and then act on the remaining 10% at, on June 29th, at the adoption of our budget and the remainder of the school board.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Sharnon, would you call the roll?
Sir, Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Barley?
No, no.
Mr. Cox? Mrs. Carmack?
No.
Mr. Williams?
So the motion passes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Norvig.
I still think Ms. Carmack's idea about process for the budget year, I'm not talking about the next six weeks, I'm talking about a policy for the board.
I'm getting ready to call for the motion on that from Mrs. Carmack, now that we have decided that we are, this is going to be the proposal that we have already adopted, so going to Mr. Cox's point, now we can do the appropriation motion.
Yes, so Mr. Cox, what you were talking about before, I think I caught your meaning, so now we're voting on a new process that this board will use for the next fiscal year, right?
Correct, and that's quarterly appropriation, so Mrs. Carmack.
Not attached to any dollar amount, it's just a process.
This is the way that we're going to appropriate going forward in the budget.
Got it.
Mrs. Carmack?
I move, I guess we do quarterly appropriations, beginning, can I say, beginning June 30th? Is that?
Beginning FY '21, we will do.
Yeah, FY '21.
Second?
Any discussion on the motion?
I think it's a great idea, if we need to meet more often, we can do that, too.
Mr. Cox?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me clarify, sir, by your understanding, it's quarterly appropriations across the board, schools, constitutional officers, county, facility, everything, it has, it's all or nothing.
It's all or nothing.
All or nothing, just sir, by your understanding, it's quarterly appropriations for all.
Agencies.
The clarification, Tom, that's important, it is, it's for everyone, we can't, we can't just do it for the schools. Thank you, that's, all right. Any comments? Do we need to do a roll call for this? I believe we do, don't we, Tom?
No, it's not an ordinance, you can.
Okay, policy, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right. I believe that brings us to our second public comment period. Brett, I'm going to need your help again on bringing people on board.
Yes, sir, let's just give a moment here, I don't, we don't have any phone numbers that I see, so it's all Zoom, so again.
I'm going to open the second public comment at this time, and I'm going to request that people come forward, please give your name and your address, individuals, we will give you three minutes, if you represent a group, we will give you five minutes.
And if you're looking to speak, again, just hit the raise hand icon. I see, Jim Carver, he just made a comment, said, thanks for your hard work on county budget and your prudent approach.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Any other comments?
Yes, we have, Mr. Asup has raised his hand, John, if you could bring him on.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Asup.
Good morning, it's Mike Asup from 3673 Old Buckingham Road, I want to recognize the board's challenging decision to cut the transfer by 10%, but, but also acknowledge that looking forward, the board is willing to have meaningful discussions to see the impact, because the superintendent has said that further cuts would involve loss of positions, which is teachers, aides, administrators, and other, other folks, so as a citizen, I want the board to really be cognizant of that and appreciate the window of opportunity to create a constructive dialogue with the school board, which has worked hard and cooperated with the Board of Supervisors on its past requests. One thing that concerns me as a citizen, as a, as a career educator, is that while we are quite proud of the, the, the community's support of our, our public schools, our excellent public schools in Powhatan, that we don't want to slide during this recession, even though we must make sacrifices, so we acknowledge that. But I, one, one data point that the superintendent shared last week, or actually was it with this board, was that Powhatan is ranked, I believe, he said 101st in the local share of funding for its public schools, that's 1, 101 out of 132 or 3 school divisions across the Commonwealth, and that puts us as Powhatan, our local share, in the bottom quartile of all school divisions in the Commonwealth. And just to maintain that awareness that we are, while we make sacrifices, we also need to keep that investment going to keep our schools excellent and to grow our schools for the future. Now, we have quite substantial sacrifices that we must all make during this recession. So I, as a school administrator who's had to cut 25 teaching positions in special education, cut $2 million, I've, I've been there, done it, so I know the sacrifices that are made for this school division, and appreciate all the work our school staff. and appreciate all the work our school staff are doing. And again, this board for the difficult decisions you have to make and the uncertainty of the future. So I understand that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Asap. Brett, we have anybody else wishing to address the board?
I, I see no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I will close the second public comment period. Um, county administrator comments, Mr. Sharnon.
Yeah, just briefly, um, we'll give a, a more full update on COVID nineteen in the county at next week's meeting on the eighteenth. Uh, as of this morning, we're at twenty-three cases. Um, and then also just to update you, uh, we are at the staff level actively working on our reopening plans. So we're finalizing a draft of that that we will, uh, share with the board, get your feedback, and then, uh, work with the public to implement. So we're actively working on that and again, look forward to sharing more soon. That's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharnon. County attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go from, to my left, Mrs. Carmack.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Norvik.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, Brett, um, I, I'm responding a bit to your comment, I guess, uh, the updated information you gave on the number of cases. In line with that, do you have an update on the number of unemployed? It was seven hundred seventeen. Um, I know they just updated unemployment numbers for the nation today, so there might not be anything new here in Powhatan yet. But do you have the latest unemployment number for us?
Yeah, those are released on Thursday. I did not have a chance to, uh, get those updated numbers today. Uh, I have the ones from last week in front of me, but since those are dated, I don't think that's helpful, but, um, yeah, you can get that off the VEC's website or, uh, tomorrow I'll send those out to everyone.
Yeah, I didn't see them today, but like I said, the, you know, they, they shoot those numbers out, in fact, early this morning, I think, so, thank you. Um, my comment is fairly brief. I, I want to be really, really clear what this board just did tonight. It did not, did not cut the schools ten percent. That was not the proposal. The proposal that Mr. Williams put forward was we're actually funding now, um, sorry, we're proposing and putting in a budget ninety percent of the ask, and we are going to be discussing the remaining ten percent. So, uh, I'll speak very clearly. No one should report in a newspaper or whisper in their neighbor's ear that the board just cut the schools by ten percent. That is an incorrect statement. The correct statement would be that the Board of Supervisors just funded ninety percent with the caveat of examining the remaining ten percent over the next six-week period in cooperation with the school board, so we can come up with the best number we can do under these economic times and maintain the excellence of our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Norvik, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I have Mr. Cox.
Yes, sir. We've just got theoretically some money, two point six million, of which I think we're going to be hard pressed to spend very much of it at all. Uh, with all the restrictions on it, we're not going to be able to spend much of that money. We're in a situation where our health side, I don't believe, has quite peaked yet. The scary thing about that is our economic damage will follow and has been following the health damage. So we've got a ways to go yet with the economic damage. It's still building. Uh, we have just, I have found no good news anywhere about what is going to happen to us. I listened, uh, this morning to the, uh, tourism board. Restaurants have to be operating at seventy-five percent to even think about breaking even. There's not even a glimmer that that can happen. Uh, so the number of people that are out of work are going to climb, in my estimation. Uh, having said that, with all this bad news, I'm particularly happy, uh, with the approach we've taken, uh, involving the schools. More discussion, more time. I don't know what that's going to yield, uh, but I think, uh, I, I was happy to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll be very brief. Uh, you know, I'm very appreciative of what the school board has done in their efforts. Um, I would like to make mention, uh, tonight for people that are on, watching, that, uh, there is Wi-Fi at bus, five buses that are in the, I believe they're all in the western part of the county. Um, there's hotspots that are available, uh, and have been through the library and the schools. Um, so that's, that's out there, and, um, you know, if you have a problem getting to that, you know, a hotspot or something, it, it, just a matter of calling the schools. That they, they have the product, I'm pretty sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Barley.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll thank Mr. Norvik for his comments and the clarification that, no, we're not cutting the schools ten percent. As I said in my motion, we're going to continue to work on the remaining ten percent with the school board, getting their input and understanding what different scenarios of reductions actually mean. So again, Mr. Norvik, thank you. Now, let me say this tonight. I'm extremely proud of my staff, the schools, Brett, and this board. Nobody's got a silver bullet for the situation that we find ourselves in, and everybody's working twenty-four, seven. It doesn't leave you. You live with it. As Mr. Barley said, we take very seriously the taxpayers' dollars that we're stewards of, and we understand just how scarce those tax dollars can get real quick. We're living it right now. So although you didn't see all of us agreeing on everything tonight, we're all in agreement about working through this together. You can't expect everybody to try to get their arms around something like this and come forward with the same solution. That said, there's no bad suggestions. Everybody's trying to work through this to find our way through it. So again, I want to comment, you know, congratulate the board because I know how long, how much they've been working on this. So with that, we wish everybody to stay safe, and we're going to close the meeting tonight at.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Uh, you need to, uh, announce the interviews.
Thank you, thank you, Brett. We're having a closed meeting on May twenty-seventh where we will be doing interviews for the new county administrator. Brett, do I need to add anything more to that?
Uh, I don't think so, Tom. Is that sufficient notice?
Yeah, that's fine because we don't have to identify the location on that.
Okay. Brett, thank you for reminding me. Brett now having a good laugh this afternoon, you know, I said, don't let me forget that, so he didn't. So thank you, sir. All right, with that, I will close this meeting at eight twenty-eight PM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.